Will the clerk please call the row?
Alder Pore.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Kitzler is excused.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin, I just want to point out to the viewing audience that even though it says January 7th at the bottom of the screen, this is actually the January 22nd meeting. We have some software problems in terms of the signs at the bottom of the screens, which they'll be repairing before they upload this later this week. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Minutes are approved. There are no appearances for this portion of the meeting. There is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Item G1A, consideration of resolution 19-1-2317, approval of a four-lot certified survey map, CSM for lot two and lot three of CSM 8819, White Horse. This is put forth by the Plan Commission. And Carl Sandsness is here representing the White Horse family if anyone has any questions. Otherwise, he's not going to speak, so. Mr. Stefan.
We have a motion.
I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Okay, I will cover the second read on behalf of most city planner. But in any case, nothing has changed on the resolution since the first reading at council. If there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to see if I can answer them for you. Otherwise, nothing new.
Does anyone have any questions?
Like I said.
Doug?
So, it looks like there are easements for each of the lots that go through the private drive that goes to Public Road, right?
It looks like there's one main private drive, and there's access from each lot to that private drive. And then, the private drive has access to Broadway.
And those are recorded easements that can go away?
I believe so.
Not just being for Dan, but it doesn't look like it's a recorded easement to me. It's described as an outlot of the CSM. So it would be a separate, unbuildable lot of the CSM. Presumably, the owners will put in placing easement over that. But right now, for just CSM purposes, it's the private drive that's going to give access to lots one, two, and three to the public road.
Right.
Mr. Sandsness, did you?
Outlot one is...
Sir, I'm sorry, we need you to go to the podium.
Yes, outlot one is going to be a private drive to serve all the lots out there. There's only two lots that will have, that's outside the CSM, that will also have the right to use outlot one as well to get out to Broadway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You're done, thank you. Yeah. You're welcome. Item G1B, consideration of traffic measures for Bridge Road reconstruction. This involves Strand Associates. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Dan?
Okay. Administrator Ghetto collected some information from the police chief and the fires chief, I believe, at the direction of city council coming out of the last meeting, seeking input on the Yahara River Bridge during construction. I think both the chiefs and their departments prefer to keep the southbound lane open over the bridge during construction. And Josh at Strand put together some very rough estimates to keep one-way, southbound, open during construction. He estimates it'd be about a $35,000 additional expense. They also looked at putting up a temporary traffic signal, and that estimate was around $50,000, so. But I think the consensus would be to recommend the city council to keep one lane open, southbound, for traffic, and that would be open to all traffic.
Do we have any idea how much time that might add to the project?
I think I recall Josh saying somewhere between three and four weeks. It wasn't a significant amount of time, so.
Alder Groupie?
I remember also that there was a request to check in with public safety about the one-way traffic and whether or not it would impact routes for ambulance and fire in any negative way.
I think, is that what we're referring to, what the chief said?
Yes.
I think.
Sorry.
I think Dan just addressed that, that they would like to have it one-way going south.
I see, the chief recommended, okay, thank you.
Alder Wood?
But tonight, we're just approving the ordinance to make that a four-way stop.
That's a separate item.
That's a separate item. But I think we're looking for direction from council so we can finalize the bid information. We're intending to put this out to bid probably within a week, based on if council desires the bridge to be open during construction. So, seeking some guidance.
Yeah, there really isn't any documentation about this particular issue in the packet.
Mayor?
So it's Alder...
So, just to go back to what Molly was saying, my understanding from the last session was there are essentially three options presented by the contractor. One was bridge closure altogether.
Right.
Two was bridge being one-way only, and three being...
Traffic light.
Traffic light.
Right.
And what public safety is now saying is one-way is the best, they think is the best. Okay, so they've ruled out the other options.
I think, Wally, do you want to address that? Were we concerned about backup if emergency vehicles were trying to get through and...
And just as we're waiting, as a point of clarification, the memo with the comments from the two chiefs is on the last page of the section related to the four-way stop item.
Okay.
Yeah, my memo, my response to the email was that with our squad cars, we're much more maneuverable than the fire trucks. I mean, it would add some time to us cutting down side streets. I think the fire chief recommended at least having a lane. I don't want to speak for him, but if it was just one lane on one side going southbound, it would keep the Winnequa Road commuter traffic going, and it would also give emergency vehicles a chance to get to their destinations. When they're coming back to the station, that's when they could take alternate routes. So I think the recommendation, Scott, is basically just have a one-way during construction.
And what were your thoughts about the traffic light option?
Well, the traffic light, I think the problem with that is if, depending, you know, looking at the map that was shown, enforcing that could be a problem, because we can't just station someone down there. If someone decides, I've seen them in construction zones before, and if everybody obeys them, they work really well. But if they don't, and they get impatient, then you could have a problem, because there's no room for anybody to pass. It's just one-way.
I thought I read some concern also about traffic being backed up.
Yeah, the engineer, Josh, had some concerns about the queuing of vehicles when you have the temporary stoplight, that you'd have to take into account as well.
If an emergency vehicle was trying to get through, and they were all backed up for the stoplight? Because they wouldn't be able to move over, is that...
Sure. They might not see the emergency vehicles coming until they were already in the queue or on top of the bridge, and they wouldn't be able to back up.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, another issue with the traffic light, I think, would be compliance, because you're going to make people, it's just going to be set to operate, you know, for whatever, minute-and-a-half green, and so, you know, however many seconds red. And there's a lot of times in the day when there won't be any opposing traffic, and people are just, you know, going to either wonder why in the world did they put a traffic light here, so. I would, for me, I guess, keeping it one-way, one lane, one-way, southbound is the better solution, or best solution.
And another part of that was it would also keep those vehicles from cutting down some of the side streets like Ford, and not having them be impacted by the construction.
Anyone else? No? Hearing nothing else, I guess all in favor of, I guess we don't really have a motion, do we, to...
I mean, it could be a motion of expressing the kind of intent of the council, saying your preference for one of the three options would be sufficient.
So who made that original? Chad?
I'll offer a motion that we approve the one-way option during construction, southwest out of the city of Manona, on Bridge Road.
Does that have to be amendment to the original motion?
Yeah, the original motion was to approve the traffic, you know, as it's written, so are you amending the original motion?
I suppose I could, though I do see them as separate issues, because our opinion of how the intersection should end up is separate from how the construction project should proceed, I believe.
This is just about the traffic measures for the Bridge Road construction.
Right.
Right. But I think the motion wasn't very clear, really, since it was just a motion to consider traffic measures.
The original motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Could just withdraw the original motion and make Chad's new motion.
That'd be easier.
How about that, Chad?
That would be Nancy and Jennifer.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was Chad. So Nancy?
I'm happy it was part of the motion.
Jennifer? Okay. Is there a new...
There's no second for Alder Spate's new motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion approving the one lane, southbound, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, G1C, consideration of ordinance 1-19-713, requiring a four-way stop controlled intersection at Winnequa Road and Bridge Road, put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Second.
Any, or, Dan, do you want to...
Thank you, Mayor. There is no additional information on this either. This is the second read for this tonight. We're looking to, upon completion of the construction, turn this into a four-way stop-controlled intersection, to meet better designs of today, but there's nothing new to add, Mayor.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. We've received a couple of public comments about in opposition of the four-way stop being implemented, and many of them are citing, you know, the good flow of traffic that we're experiencing now, low traffic accident rates. But the important thing to keep in mind is that this is for looking into the future with the riverfront development, with the reconstruction of Winnequa Road. And frankly, the way that the road currently is, is not very safe for pedestrians or bikers. So regardless of traffic accidents, I think there's still a risk for walkers and bikers. So I think Josh has been very thorough, and I think conservative by his own estimation in his projections for future traffic backup. And I think it's really important that we consider, you know, the future look and feel of that intersection once the riverfront is completed and the construction on Winnequa is completed as well.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Dan. Final item, G1D, consideration of ordinance 1-19-712, updating the fees, fines, and penalties scheduled, put forth by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And this was approved in Finance and Personnel last time, I think. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mark, were you, is somebody going to talk about this, or Joan?
No.
I'm not sure.
Basically, we update this every year, once a year. The main things that are updated in this was the permits and the park fees, the building permits, and those fees were updated, based on, just from our contracted service, contracted building inspectors, basically was telling us we were actually kind of losing money with our fees, they needed to be updated, kind of, so we took some other communities and kind of implemented from there. The park fees, they were updated through the park board, and they're all implemented into the budgets. That's all I kind of have for that. Everything's been updated and approved. I mean, everything's been updated within the 2019 budget with these changes.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item 2A, presentation and discussion of public facilities. This is Bray Architects, Mike Hacker is here to speak tonight, and I think Mark will be, Jeff Belange is not able to be here from Hutchinson Shockey, and Mark will discuss. Has some information from him that he'll talk about later. So, Mike, do you want to come up to the podium? Everyone should have received the report from the solution study packet, which is the updated facility study in your packet.
All right, well, good evening. Mike Hacker, again with Bray Architects, so thank you for having me tonight. Kind of a point of history, Bray was brought on back in 2011 and conducted about a year-long study, looking at all the existing city infrastructure around their facilities, so City Hall, the community and senior centers, and the public safety facilities as well. In that assessment, we looked at the existing buildings, the use of those, utilization of the space you have. We spent a fair amount of time with the staff, really looking at the space need, so not just what you have today, but forecasting into the future what square footage might be, needed to be planned for. We looked at the existing state of those facilities, so the infrastructure, we had engineers come through and look at the building systems. We looked at the ADA compliance of the existing buildings as well. And then, at the end of that, provided some considerations and recommendations for the council to consider going forward, okay? And so, now stepping forward about seven years, just a few months ago, we were asked to come back on board and kind of refresh that study, kind of prepare to take some next steps, or at least position the council to consider what next steps might look like. And so, in doing so, we thought it important to maybe start by just kind of refreshing the space needs portion, right? The existing facility analysis hasn't really changed, right? Significant investments haven't necessarily been made in each of those facilities. So we really spent the majority of our time meeting with the staff, talking about, basically, have any of the needs changed from seven years ago till now, and providing some updates to those, okay? So tonight's presentation, at least the portion that I'm a part of, is really meant as a high-level overview of kind of the outcome of that. A key piece of that was starting to study some test fits on different sites, and that's really what you're going to discuss in closed session here, a little bit later this evening. So I won't go much into that. But as a precursor to that, a couple of key things for you to keep in mind. So as, again, a point of summary, the previous study started by looking at each department in isolation of itself, and then where appropriate in potential solutions, looked at what a combined solution might look like. And so, really, as we stepped into this study, we were really charged with looking at a combined public safety building, okay? And then, a combined senior center and community center, okay? Then looking at how best to utilize the remaining space within the existing City Hall building, okay? And so, out of that, really, the lion's share of the focus, and kind of the main heavy lifting really around the public safety building, was, you know, looking at, again, the two departments in isolation, but really then bringing them together, and starting to consider what might a shared facility look like? Where are their efficiencies? If we are under one roof, okay? And so, we identified some shared space. I think we have about 4,500 square feet identified within the space program as shared space, which would be lobby, you know, public space, public restrooms, things like that. We had identified some training space for staff within that shared area, as well as some fitness, some shared dispatch space, as well as some just building circulation, data, things like that, okay? And so, in total, you'll see two really important numbers to keep in mind. The first one is the combined net program total, okay? And just quick comparison, net versus gross. The total net square footage is about just under 39,000 square feet in total, okay? And net square footage really is just looking at all the individual rooms added up, okay? So it's just the space need within the departments. When we consider what a new building might look like, we need to gross that up, just means that we have to start to account for mechanical rooms, and hallways, and wall thicknesses, and plumbing chases, and things we know we're going to have in a new building that we obviously wouldn't have in a department need, as identified, right? And so, you'll see below in the space program, a series of grossing factors for circulation, mechanical, as well as miscellaneous, which brings us just under 54,000 square feet in total, okay? It's 53,800 in total, okay? So if we talk about a new combined public safety building, that's really the number as we started to look at what might fit on different sites. We were looking at that basically 53,800 square foot total, okay? Key piece to that is for us to get our arms around how much of that is on the first floor, right? So as we start to think about what the footprint of that building is, as it fits on different sites. So what we've attempted to do is, and you'll see in the space program, categorize first floor and second floor, room by room. And there are some obvious logical things that just have to be on a first floor, and you'll see the vast majority of our square footage really does need to be on the first floor, and that's going to be apparatus bays, garages, there's some key adjacencies from Sally ports to the detention space that want to be on the first floor. Our public space, as much as possible, we'd like that to be on the first floor. So you'll see into that about 15% of that total gross square footage, we think, could naturally bump up to a second floor, okay? And so, as you look at the different solutions, you'll see, really, we're looking at a footprint of closer to 44,000 square feet in total, okay? So then, the next piece that we were asked to do is, as we kind of identified a series of sites that might work, is start to get our arms around potential cost, okay? And again, stepping back to 2011, we did some of these estimates, but they were a bit in a vacuum, sites had not really been identified. So really, kind of fast-forwarding ourselves to where we are today, you'll see a preliminary cost model, okay? And that's obviously not an estimate, we're not basing this on a design at this point. This is just based on Bray Architects' experience designing police and fire stations in the area over the past two years or so, okay? And so, what you'll see here is an analysis that breaks down what we would forecast as construction costs, as well as soft costs, okay? And so, as you get some time to look at this, key difference there, construction cost is really what you're looking for on bid day, okay? So that's what the contractor would be submitting in their low bid. And then, we know that there are a series of things that the contractor would not be responsible for, but we know that the city would need in order to complete that project, so fees for land surveys, some geotechnical, potentially new furniture, architectural fees, things that we know that wouldn't be the responsibility of the contractor, but you should be planning for in your kind of budgeting exercises. So you'll see here, when you add in the construction cost and the soft costs, we get to a total of basically $14.5 million. And whenever we do these as part of studies, it's always really important to timestamp them, okay? Because we want to know, you know, basically, at what date is this assumed? So we assume that this would be a fall 2019 budget model, okay? Not right or wrong, not trying to advance the city by any means, it's just important for us to timestamp that. So I would recommend that if we, as a city, are looking to roll that out a year into the future, you should assume about 4.5% inflation, okay? And that would be compounding. So if we, for any reason, need to roll that out two years, you need to compound that year over year thereafter, okay? And so, just keep that in mind as you're considering this. Lots of things have kind of weighed into that inflation recommendation, but kind of industry, if we look back the past 10 years, the average is about 4.5%, okay? Do note that this does not include land acquisition costs, okay? And so, as you get into that next conversation, that's outside of this number here, okay? And then, the second portion of the study really looked at the campus master plan. And this was, I think, a healthy exercise for the facility committee to spend time talking about. We did talk a lot about kind of the long-term vision of remaining campus, and a lot of the dialogue really tied how this potential project, or what might be associated with this, might kind of dovetail into some long-term planning around the parks, and the green space, and some of the outdoor rec pieces, some of the outdoor pool pieces, things that weren't a part of our study, okay? And so, you'll see, as you get into this, we attempted to, again, kind of do our full exercise on the square footage need. We looked at how a new building might fit on the site, in kind of a series of different arrangements. A key piece is really how do we get parking, and make that parking work for kind of, you know, a large occupancy use like this? And so, that was a key part of the discussion, but did not land on a recommendation, okay? And that was purposeful, just in allowing, I think, the committee and then council to kind of tie this into some of the longer-term planning around the park and things like that, okay? And so, hopefully, there's enough information there to use as a basis for that conversation, but did not make formal recommendations or establish costs at this point for that project, okay? And then, lastly, you'll see just in the very back, in the appendix, a, basically, a series of the meeting minutes associated with those facility committee discussions, just for your reference, okay? So with that said, obviously, these are, from our perspective, always easy to oversummarize or get into way too much detail on, so kind of at this high level, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council has.
And I would just add, a closed-session minutes are in your packet, your closed-session packet, and there are, the committee's recommendations are the very final page, so. Alder Moore?
When you were looking at, when you did the study initially, or since then, and given your considerable expertise in designing other city facilities in other locations, I'm wondering if either in the original study, or in the course of doing this update, there was any kind of comparative analysis done, which is to say, as an example, you know, when the police department comes and asks us for a new officer, they've got a study that shows data, you know, comparing other cities to what we're doing, and I, and just want to be clear, because I think it's important for our public to understand that this wasn't just a matter of you sitting down and asking for a wish list for everybody. That could, we could end up with a very large building, a very nice building, but not necessarily the most functional thing. So I'm wondering, as you're, how do you weigh that out, and are you looking at comparative facilities for similar-sized communities, or how do you...
Yeah, so, fair question. And so, in full disclosure, we did not do a, kind of a matrixed comparison. We didn't say, here are the five other communities of the same size, and how they benchmark. I will say, when we build the space program, that is the filter, we are running that through, okay? And so, a simple example would be a fire garage apparatus bay, as an example.
Sure.
So when we hear we need X number of bays, for us, there are best practices for what we would recommend, the widths of those to be, and the depths of those to be. Do we have the site capacity to support a drive-through bay, which would be an ideal scenario, which is what this is based on? And so, we've built that into the space program that's here.
Okay.
I would say the largest quantities of square footage, especially on the fire end, is really going to be in those apparatus bays, okay? So it's often a difficult comparison, because that apparatus equipment is really dependent on the community that you're in, right? And so, are you on a lake where you have to have certain equipment? Are you serving buildings over certain height, and have to have a ladder truck, as an example? So that's going to vary depending on which community you're in, okay? So some of those are specialty pieces. So some of those are, are specialty pieces. Similarly, on the police end, I think, a couple of key pieces. One is, again, the garage is a key component. It's very, very common. The vast majority of police stations across the state, originally, when they were built in the fifties and sixties and seventies, just didn't have garages, and if they did, they were one or two stalls, if that. And every station, every department that we're working with, were planning around getting all their squads into a garage. That's, that's the goal, and that's very, very common. So to hear that here, that, you know, certainly is not a surprise, and I think that's, it's just kind of best practice. That's why nights like tonight, they're not out leaving the cars running and shoveling them off and, and things like that.
Sure.
So with that said, I, not to kind of tiptoe around your question, I would say professionally, we use that filter, but we certainly work closely with, with your leadership and was, did our best to listen to, to their needs as well.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Doug?
Couple of questions, just first to follow up on that. Would that, the same hold true in terms of the size of the spaces for, for example, a lieutenant's office, I think was one that I, I get back up to, the size of the various spaces for personnel, or is that, are there sort of professional standards, best practices for that?
There are, yep, there are. And, and you know, obviously, at this high level as a master plan, we're using that as the basis. So we certainly haven't sat down and drawn that office and shown furniture and talked through the use and how many people you're meeting with and how frequently you're meeting with them, and we haven't gotten into that level of detail, certainly. So I would say these are certainly best recommendations at this point in the process.
Okay. Then I noticed that there is twenty-five thousand dollar for, dollars for demolition? Or was that for the existing fire department garage?
Yep, and that, that actually was zeroed out. So, yep, so that, that was not included. Yep, so we built some of these in as we talked through the solution, obviously what we're proposing is, is where we landed with that. So no dollars in this are associated with the demolition of that.
Okay. And then, do you know what the current combined space of the two departments?
Yeah, you know, I, I took a look at that. So right now, the combined net square footage, not the gross, okay? So the net combined is basically sixteen thousand five hundred, okay? And again, what we're showing here, combined net is about thirty-eight thousand, okay? Just as you're apples to apples.
Right.
That is, I would say, again, just professional experience, very common, okay? It's, it's, to see almost a doubling of, of where we are to where we project us, us needing to be, is often kind of a sticker shock number, that's a big jump to make. But when we really think about the size of the apparatus bays and the garage, the garage is probably, I would have to look at the numbers, but a fair percentage of just the PD need all by itself, that's going to make up a lot of that pretty quickly.
Right, and I think anybody, we, we've all toured the facilities and saw how inadequate they currently are, so.
Yep.
That's, I think, to me, that more reflects how undersized it is now.
Yep. Yep. And obviously, at this point in the process, you know, we're working in ideals, and we're working in kind of best practices and, and long-term visions, and so we certainly, this is not a, a full design, as I mentioned earlier, it's not based on working backwards from an established budget, it's just identifying what we believe the needs are. What we see as best practice is working with other similar-sized departments, and then establishing a square footage, and ultimately, you know, building that into a cost model.
Anyone else? No further questions? Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in closed session.
Thank you.
Yep.
And drive carefully.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mark is going to, Jeff Belaja was not able to make it tonight, and Mark is going to explain a little bit about our debt capacity.
Yeah, so I told Jeff not to come because of the weather, you know, the weather was supposed to be worse than it is right now, so just because he driving from Milwaukee. So, kind of going to walk through this, this is just our, our debt limit, just, just kind of a basic thing, just kind of going to walk through it line by line, year by year, just kind of get an idea where we're at. So, we started 2019, and the first line, so our equalized, so our debt limit, just to start, is you can borrow up to five percent of your equalized value. We do have a higher borrowing amount, we actually have a, we've borrowed a lot of money, you know, so we're, we're close to our debt capacity. I don't know if we, when we talked through the cap of projects, we had kind of broken out what's TIF and non-TIF. Over fifty percent is in TIF, so it's, so it's a little misleading when we talk about our debt, that, because all this forty-two thousand, forty-two million dollars is, we get the current debt, majority of that is in the TIFs. So when we're talking about general, we're less than, you know, twenty million dollars with that, but, so if you go with the equalized value, like 2019, or one point three billion, and what I did for the next, up to twenty-five, I used three percent as my assumption, it grows by three percent per year. Average over the last five years is four point six two, so a little under that, that three percent, or three percent's a little under the four point two, four point six two, but I think it's a, it's kind of a conservative number. So you can go up to five percent. So our debt limit for 2019 is sixty-six million, and you can see 2020, just kind of using that same analysis, as it goes up. Then a, a part underneath that, you have their debt limit, and what are current debt? So our current debt for 2019 is, let's go around up to forty-three million dollars, so we have twenty-three, twenty-three million, five hundred thousand available. We do have some capital borrowing, in the 2019 cap plan, we have four million dollars we had set aside for. We do have two developers' agreements, TIF grants, that more likely will be paid out this year, once the project's completed, under some cap interest related to those TIF grants, because we don't have to increment yet. So it really brings down to 2019, what's available is fifteen million, nine hundred thousand. And then you go to 2020, kind of the same situation. The current debt, when I get that number, forty-five million dollars, what that is, is I subtract out what the current debt payment is for that year, and then add in the previous capital borrowing. As you can see, kind of, and I added in what's in the capital plan for 2020 up to, I added third, 2023 and 2024, 2025, I put three million dollars as a placeholder there. But as you can see, for 20 and 21, they're probably not realistic numbers, but what's in the, the five, five-year cap plan, you have six million dollars for 2020 and seven point six million dollars for 2021. So as you can see, we're at sixteen million, five hundred for 2020, 21 seventeen million, 22 is twenty, twenty-one million, and up to 25 is thirty-seven million dollars. There is one caveat, I, I put in there is bands. So we do have three, we have some bands out for eleven million dollars, two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Could you explain what those are, Mark?
Yeah, so they're bond anticipation notes. So basically, right now, we borrowed for the riverfront project, so that's the purchase of some of the properties, a lot of the construction works, we have that outstanding, and it's kind of, and we have cap interest in there. Right now, we're not receiving increments, we basically have like a five-year note, and once we start receiving increments, we can put them into long-term debt. There's two things you can do with that, with these bands, I'm working with Jeff, we can put them into these, they're called TIF increment taxable notes. So they're basically, interest rate is basically what a taxable note would be. So it's a little bit higher interest rate than a general obligation note, so you're going to pay a little bit more with those, but they would not affect the debt limit. So, I don't have those included right now, but in 2023, we want to include them. You can see what the difference would be to the debt limit, instead of, look at twenty, 2023, instead of twenty-seven million, if we actually convert those to GO, go against the debt limit, and not leave them as these revenue bonds, it's a difference of eleven million dollars. So it's from twenty-seven down to basically sixteen million, and so on, so. That's something we have to kind of make in 2023, kind of base where, where the rates are and where we're at. But as far as capacity, you know, up to 2025, we will have the capacity within to do the public safety building.
Questions? Nancy?
So, Mark, forgive me, but can you explain again why it is that you chose to leave the bands, to not include them in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then all of a sudden decided to include them in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
Right, so the bands right now are, they do not go against the debt limit right now, because bands, there's just certain types of note, or borrowings that go against your debt limit, bond tip station notes do not go against that.
Okay.
And so they are refinanced in 2023, and that's when we have to figure out which method we want to do. If you want to leave them as taxable revenue bonds, which would not affect the debt limit, or if you want to put them as general obligation notes.
Okay, so, so if I'm hearing you correctly, then even though you've put them in as differently in, starting in 2023, we could choose to treat them exactly the way we are now, which would mean that wouldn't be included in the debt.
Right, so it's, it's option in 2023, we have to figure out what, at the time, look at the analysis and what's the best way to approach it.
Doug?
Right now, we are including five hundred thousand dollars in interest for those, correct?
Correct.
So that would go, if they were?
Well, these are separate from the, the TIF grants, the five, you're talking about that five hundred dollars in 2019?
Five hundred thousand in capitalized interest.
Yep, so those two, again, I probably could have backed those out, I didn't, now I'm thinking about that. So, yeah, so basically, if you had the two TIF grants, so it's three point one, three point six, we could probably do the same thing there in 2023. We borrow those, we put those in a band to 2023, and we start making increment, same situation there. So you could look at that, too, and say, that's three million dollars extra we could add to the debt limit. And I would assume, if you look at 2020 and 21, we got thirteen point six million dollars in the capital plan, I assume that's probably higher than, we've been borrowing around three to four million dollars, so that's another probably five million dollars, too.
Is that all the proposed projects?
It's all the proposed projects.
Yeah, and we haven't really looked at those, yeah.
The one thing that would affect it, but I think will be reach sixty-four, there's going to be a lot of grants, I believe, with that, so I don't have a number on that number, on that number, but I think we're talking about that at the next meeting, we'll kind of get more in detail what that is. That'll have a little bit of an impact, but it's not going to have much of a dent to that number.
And then, I know each year we pay back.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't, this year, I'm not sure what we have in the budget that we're paying back for four and a half, five million?
Yeah.
But that doesn't show?
I subtracted it out already.
Already did.
Yeah.
Alder Moore?
Sorry, I was going to go back to that three million you were just referencing, that add of three million, is that, are you saying that that should be added to twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
I say that, I realize after I've done this, is if you add the phase one TIF grant and the phase three TIF grant, and you add the capitalized interest, so the three point six million dollars, technically, we could probably put those as revenue bonds, too, TIF increment revenue bonds. So we could add three point six million dollars of additional space that could be.
For just those three out years?
Yeah.
Okay.
The difference between, like I said, there is a difference between interest you will pay, so that's one thing we'll have, kind of have to do, look at the analysis back in 2023, but, I was talking to Jeff, it's basically like a tax, it's basically like doing a taxes, taxable note anyway, so it's, you know, quarter percent to half percent difference. And speaking of that, I was talking to Jeff, this is kind of a little off on this, right now, the rates are decreasing, so we're looking to borrow here in early March. You know, you, you know, I don't know if what they'll come in, into March, but you said right now, like you said, we borrowed around three point three percent in, I don't know, was it like October or something like that, November? So right now, down, the rates are down to two point eight, so. So we're going to get that here in the first read, probably March, so we'll borrow, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Chip?
I hesitate to ask this question, but since you're standing there, let's just say hypothetically that we were to look at an eighteen million dollar public safety building. What sort of impact is that going to have on the tax bill?
I do have that number.
I figured you would.
Yeah. So, on average, what we used last year as, last year's budget, three hundred seventeen thousand dollar house, which is basically just average assessment, the increase for a building, we're just using the fifteen million dollars, so it's a little bit off, it's two hundred eighty-six dollars.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Two hundred eighty-six dollars for three hundred seventeen thousand dollar assessed house.
And that's just for the building, not?
That's not the other portion of it. Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mark. We are now going to go into, well, I guess first of all, is there a motion to accept the facilities report? This isn't to approve it, it's just to accept it.
Move to accept the report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. On next item, we will be, item two B, convene a closed session under Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five, front one, front E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is related to land acquisition related to public facilities study. And section nineteen point eight five, front one, front G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This relates to Four Lakes Yacht Club versus the City of Manona et al., and the McCann's Roto Sewer, Roto Sewer and Drain Cleaning Service Incorporated versus the City of Manona. Is there a motion to go into closed session? I'll move. Second, did we get a second? Will the clerk please call the roll? Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.
Yes, right, yes, I hope that that's, that comes up.
I would hope so, too. Alder Wood?
I will donate my time to the city attorney for his report.
I think I spoke good enough today, I had no report.
Jake, do you have anything to announce?
Oh, good shit.
Sorry.
Just quickly, I want to give a shout-out to our, our perch staff, who really put in a Herculean effort this past Saturday to clear all the snow off the lagoon and city campus, to make our lace-up-on-the-lagoon event a really big success. So we've all been kind of chomping at the bit for some winter fun activities, and we, of course, we get, you know, snow the night before one of our, our planned events, but it, it was really inspiring to see our staff work so hard to make one of our special events go off. So kudos to Kevin and Ryan and all of, we had about four or five in on Saturday. And of course, Missy did what she always does and puts on an awesome event for our, our kids and families of Manona. So stay tuned for some additional winter fun.
I have to say, I woke up thinking, well, that isn't going to happen, I was amazed to see kids over there late morning. Joan?
No report.
Brian?
Just quickly, a, a big thank you to staff for kind of helping me with the transition the last couple of weeks, taking time out of your busy days to meet with me. Got a couple more meetings with department heads, and been touring the city with some staff members, doing some ride-along, so it's been great thus far.
Good, glad to hear that. There, our next meeting could also be kind of lengthy, so be prepared. And I, I would like to thank staff for all the work they helped me with putting together all this information for the meeting tonight, for the public safety discussion, really several people put in a lot of time, so, thank you all. I guess we have one more thing, we have an appointment, Mike Clark is election inspector effective immediately through December thirty-first, 2019. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Appointment is approved, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.